Today, October 22nd, we do have a quorum. Councilman Harrison will do this in the indication. A pledge, please.
Our heavenly Father, we come to you once again in the precious name of Jesus, thanking you for this day. Father, we ask for your wisdom and knowledge to be imparted to each one that's making the decision for this city. Father, we thank you that we have this opportunity to be voices for those who are silent. And Lord, would just be mindful to give you the praise that we come together in unity for the community. And we'll be mindful to give you the praise in Jesus' holy and powerful name, we pray. Flag, are we ready? Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Mayor?
Here. First business is the Employee of the Month for October. In August 2019, excuse me, Employee of the Month for October 2019 is Colby Barnett. In August 2019, Officer Barnett and McAllister Police Officer took a report of a burglar at a local hotel. The thief cut open a luggage carrier on top of a vehicle in a parking lot and removed the suitcase that was inside. The suitcase contained a set of leg braces custom fit for a 13-year-old girl from St. Louis, Missouri. They were valued at $10,000. This meant the young lady would be confined to a wheelchair as she started back to school. Officer Barnett initiated a social media request for the recovery of the braces. This was shared around 2,000 times over the next couple of days. On the second day, a police officer reported that he found a set of leg braces in his yard. Officer Barnett picked up the braces and confirmed they were the braces that had been reported stolen. McAllister Police Department has a excuse me, has a process for shipping recovered items back to victims that require them to make arrangements for their return. Officer Barnett knew the emotional trauma the girl was experiencing, so he contacted her parents and paid for the braces to be shipped to her himself. Other MPD and 911 employees learned of this and collected money to reimburse Officer Barnett, but this was not at his request. This shows hard work, ingenuity, compassion of Officer Barnett. For these reasons, we concur that Officer Barnett is deserving of this award. We do have a short film to watch as well.
He found them?
He found them. They're already on the way back home. The officer took them to mail to you. You'll get them tomorrow. Isn't it awesome? I love you.
Thank you.
New at six, a summer road trip for a St. Peters family turned into a terrible memory after a girl's leg braces were stolen on the way back home.
The complete strangers made sure that wasn't how her trip ended. Brandon Morano had this story.
Thirteen-year-old Hava Maderas has spinal bifida. Last week while on vacation, somebody stole the braces that help her walk. Now she's getting them back. At the last stop on a family road trip, a thief broke into the Maderas family car stealing bags of clothes and Hava's $10,000 leg braces.
At which point it was kind of just it's a constant stomach feeling where you just, you know, it's gone and you're not going to get it back.
But what the Maderas family didn't count on during their drive back from Houston, Texas, was their daughter's braces being stolen in the jurisdiction of the McAllister Oklahoma Police Department.
They're worthless to everyone else, but they're priceless to the person they fit.
In this case, their daughter, Hava. For that, she has McAllister Oklahoma Police Officer Colby Barnett to thank them.
I did exactly what any officer could do. I got the bank, put it around here.
He took to Facebook asking anyone for help returning Hava's braces. And sure enough, they showed up at the station a couple of days later.
When you saw her face, when her mom, you know, told her that her leg braces were coming back, what emotions were going through your head?
I can't lie there. I'm supposed to be a police officer and not an emotional guy. Say I got here, God, that's how I understand it. Get your sweet fucker, man.
The same can be said for Hava Maderas. Who thanks to some great work by police.
Good job.
Will now be able to walk around almost worry-free.
It feels good to get up and walk instead of being a little
In St. Peters, Missouri, Brandon Morano on your side.
Officer Barnett and the department also pulled money to ship Hava's braces back to her free of charge. He told Brandon he's planning to get together with her for a walk and dinner soon.
Hey, Colby?
Yes, sir.
Come around.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Well, that's hard to top that.
Yeah, that was kind of a, that was a good one. Now we have excuse me, two proclamations. The first is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas according to the American Cancer Society, this year 271,270 people will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer in the U.S. More than 42,260 women and men in the U.S. are expected to die from breast cancer. And whereas, besides skin cancer, breast cancer is most commonly diagnosed. Cancer among American women, women is second only to lung cancer as cause of cancer death overall among American women. And whereas, a woman living in the U.S. has a 1 in 8 lifetime risk of being diagnosed with breast cancer, and men have a 1 in 833 lifetime risk of getting breast cancer. And whereas, when breast cancer strikes, it often impacts an entire family and all areas of their life, especially monetarily. Now therefore, I, John Brown, Mayor of the City of McAllister, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of McAllister and encourage all citizens to support health, the health community in their continued efforts to provide education and empower women and men with knowledge and information on eliminating breast cancer as a life-threatening disease. Signed this day, October 2019. We had someone. Did we have someone sign up? To speak? If you want to come up, just come to the microphone.
Hello, I'm Sharon Hall. I'm the CEO of Carrying Hands Healthcare Centers here in McAllister and Hartshorn. In honor of Breast Cancer Month, and we are combining it with Women's Health Month, we're offering free screenings for anyone, any woman who would like to come. That includes your breast exam, pap smears, your STD testing, whatever you need, HPV vaccines. All of that is free of charge this month up to the 31st in honor of Breast Cancer Month.
Thank you. Would you like? Do you like this? Do you want a picture? Well, let me, let me do, let me do the other proclamation as well, so we can just do both pictures when I get down there. Our second proclamation is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas according to the United States Department of Justice, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic violence is a serious violent crime that includes both physical and emotional abuse. It is frequently hidden from public view. Many victims suffer in silence, afraid to seek help or not knowing, excuse me, where to turn. The traumatic effects of domestic violence also extend beyond the abused person impacting family members and communities. And whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over 4 million Americans each year, and whereas 1 in 3 Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence, whereas 1 in 4 women and men have been victims of some form of physical violence by an intimate partner within their lifetime. And whereas Oklahoma is ranked 6th in the nation for women killed by men in single victim, single offender homicides. Whereas Native Americans are 2 and 1/2 times more likely to experience sexual assault crimes compared to all other races. And whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a higher rate than the national average. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelter, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, non-productivity. And whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to their victims. And therefore, I, John Brown, Mayor of the City of McAllister, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge the citizens of McAllister to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. And I think we had someone sign up here as well.
I'm a little bit shorter, so I'm going to bring it down just a little bit. Well, my name is Amanda Pruitt. I'm the Assistant Program Director of the Cowboys Community Action Domestic Violence Program. We have an emergency shelter in McAllister as well as Stigler. I brought two of my colleagues with me, Brianna Sharp and Bethany Domain. They're advocates with our shelter and they serve McAllister 24/7/365. So I just want to tell you a few things. I know that you have a full agenda tonight. I have a little bit of good news in the proclamation. I noticed you said that we are 6th in the nation. There's been some new information that's come out. Oklahoma is now ranked 20th. So we've made a lot of progress. And a lot of that progress is due to the hard work of our police department. We, along with McAllister Police Department, in the last year especially, have made an active effort to complete the lethality assessment protocol. This is a tool used on scene between officers, victims of domestic violence, and our program advocates to assess danger indicators, safety plan, and get victims immediately on the phone with advocates on the scene of the crime. So our officers have made a commitment to calling our shelter anytime, night or day, to get victims the help that they need. So this year, just to paint a little bit of a picture for you for McAllister, we have served 176 so far individuals within our emergency shelter program. That's a lot of people who have reached out for help. That doesn't include the, let's see, 485 somewhat crisis calls to our hotline. Right now in our emergency shelter, we have six adults and five children. The oldest person we're serving is 60 years old and the youngest is eight months. So domestic violence knows no bounds. We deal with a wide range of issues. We're fighting a war on substance abuse, mental health, child abuse. All of these things go hand in hand with domestic violence. So if someone brings that up to you or brings that to you, I want you to think about domestic violence and think about what we're doing here today. So we so appreciate the work that you all do, the police department and our advocates. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
One more thing. I'm so sorry. We have some packets for you all with some information about our program because we do a lot more than emergency shelters. So I wanted you to have some information. Thank you.
That should conclude the photograph. Photography part of the meeting this evening. We're on to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Residents may address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda. Residents must provide their name and address. Council requests that comments be limited to five minutes. I did have two sign up, and that's the two that already spoke. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda. It will be considered separately. The agenda tonight consists of: A, approval of minutes from the September 30th, 2019, emergency meeting in the McAllister City Council; B, approval of claims for October 2nd, 2019 through October 15, 2019; C, consider an act upon to ensure with the mayor's appointment of Kevin Beatty to the Expo Board to fill a vacancy left by Ms. Demaria Maddox. His term will expire on June 30th, 2022; D, accept and place on file the Oklahoma Free Independent Living Quarterly Report for the months of April through June 2019; E, accept and place on file the McAllister Defense Support Association Annual Report for Fiscal Year 1819 and their first quarter report for fiscal year 1920; and F, accept and place on file on McAllister Main Street Annual Report for Fiscal Year 1819. Would anyone like anything removed?
Item B, please.
B, please. Anyone else? B?
I'd like E, please.
E?
And I've got B also.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, take a motion in a second to approve items A, C, D, and F. Motion, Council, read, second vice mayor Stevens. Any discussion? Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. I've got two item Bs, do you want to?
Yeah. On page 28, Mr. Stasiak and the Tourism Fund. I see that we have an expense there for ice rink engineering. Can you explain that to me? On what that is possibly?
Page 28, I have the Infrastructure Fund.
Okay, I'm going off what was online. I'm in Tourism Fund now.
Do you know the fund number? Can you look up at the top?
Fund number is 27. And it's, it shows page 16 at the top of this, and item B.
Oh, yeah, what we had were not ice skates. We had what were a different type of ice skate. Last year, those, those skates really didn't work for us. We couldn't get an edge on them. People had a bad experiences to replace a large number of those skates for the upcoming year, which will give us a, a good variety of skates that people will be able to use on the acrylic surface.
Okay. And then on the very last item, in that, we've got one here, Webster's Store. And I see here it's Tourism Expense Folding Tables for Expo.
Yes.
For almost $2,400. Why didn't we just take that out of the Expo Fund?
Don't know. But I'll look into it.
Is there any way that we can look into that and bring that back at a later date?
Well, we could, we could just, we could reallocate it. We could credit it out of the Tourism Fund charges to the Expo.
Okay.
Okay? That'll work for you. Mayor, I also have two items on the claims list on page nine. In the O2 Fund MPWA, under Bates Instrumentation, there's two charges, one for $50,000, one for $47,717. Bates Instrumentation for $50,000 inadvertently got added based on the PO amount that was issued for Bates Instrumentation. This is the swamp land for the water line replacement. So the $50,000 is being voided. And the actual payment on that is $47,717. And then on page 28, in the Infrastructure Fund, here again, Bates Instrumentation. The PO was issued at $25,000. It was entered as a payable, along with the actual invoice of $24,158.07. The $27,000 PO amount will be voided and changed. So that cleans up those two payments to Bates Instrumentation. This was in relationship to the A Street and Pierce sewer line problem that we had.
Any questions, comments? Take a motion in a second to approve item B. Motion, Councilman Smith, second vice mayor Reed.
Is that with me and Mr. Stasiak also discussed as well, correct?
It is. The Tourism to Expo Fund.
Yeah, I don't need to make a motion or make an addition to that, correct? To, to change that?
We're going to reallocate that expense to the Expo Fund from the tourism.
Okay. Thank you.
Got the motion second. Is there any discussion, any further discussion? Corey? Well, yeah, we're going to do it. We're going to do B, then we'll go to that one.
Make the motion in a second.
Councilman Smith, Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Item B, Councilman Richard.
I saw in here where you all have been presenting to other municipalities. And I was curious which ones of those have joined in the how many S's are there? NDSA.
Hi, everyone. Okay, so we presented at
Jessica, tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm Jessica Gregg. I'm with McAllister Defense Support Services. And so we've presented at Haleyville, Hartshorn, Krebs. We presented at Kiwa. And so, in Savannah. So Savannah has joined as a platinum member, a $5,000 member. And then Krebs joined as a $500 member. Hartshorn and Haleyville both declined, and then Kiwa has not given a response. And, yes, sir?
In the county.
In the county. Pittsburgh County also joined as a $5,000 member. Holdenville was our Chamber of Commerce, but we did present in Holdenville. I've also been to Tishomingo, visited with Euphala and Stigler. Yep.
What happened, Holdenville, what'd you say?
Holdenville Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, I know, what, what'd they do?
They joined as a $500 member.
Okay.
And we also had one of their members come to our stampede.
I'm from Holdenville, so I'm proud of them.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Second. Second, Councilman Brown, any discussion? This is for E. Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Richard?
Yes. Brown? Reed?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. We're on to public hearing. All persons interested in any ordinance listed under scheduled business shall have an opportunity, we heard, in accordance with Article 2, Section 212B of the City Charter. We have three tonight. The first is an ordinance amending Chapter 102 Traffic and Vehicles of McAllister City Code, Article 5, Cycles Division 2 License Amending Chapter 48, Fees, Charges, and Service Rates, Chapter 102 Traffic and Vehicles, Article 5, Cycles Division, Division 2, License, Section 102-234 and 102-238, repealing all conflicting ordinances and providing for severability. The second is an ordinance amending Chapter 94, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places of the McAllister City Code, Article 2, Division 1, Section 94-35, Permit for Installation of Drainage Structures in Street Ditches, Amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article, Article 6, Finance, Division 4, Cost Sharing Policy for Public Works Projects, Section 2-440, Storm Drains and Culverts, Amending Chapter 48, Chapter 94, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article 6, Finance, Division 2, Purchases, Section 2-440, Storm Drains and Culverts, repealing all conflicting ordinances and providing for severability. The third is an ordinance of the City of McAllister, Oklahoma, amending ordinance number 265, 2656, which established the budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability clause and declaring an emergency. Take a motion in a second, open the public hearing. Motion, Councilman Smith, second vice mayor Stevens. Any discussion? Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, so we're now in the public, public hearing. If anyone is interested in addressing the first one, please come forward. Seeing no one, if anyone's interested in the second, seeing no one, if anyone is interested in addressing the third, seeing no one. In case I take a motion in a second to close public hearing. Motion, Councilman Smith, second vice mayor Stevens. Any discussion? Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to our regular agenda. Item 1, consider an act upon a resolution setting the election dates for wards 1, 3, 5, and Mayor. Mr. Stasiak?
Mayor, members of the council, this is setting the election dates for the upcoming year in the election, along with the mayor. The filing dates are going to be December the 2nd through December the 4th, 2019. The primary election will be held on March the 3rd, 2020. And if required, the general election will be held April the 7th. This is for wards 1, 3, 5, and the mayor's position coming, coming up for reelection.
I do have a question. Do we need to set a runoff date? If there is a runoff, or do we do that only in the case of there being one?
No, I would, I would say no at this point.
So we don't, we don't have to have a tentative date for one?
We view the, the report tonight, or the resolution, and I don't think there's any place for a runoff date. I think that would be, um, payback.
Okay. Councilman Richard?
As I say, I think the general election is the runoff. Well, there's a primary, which is where everybody runs. And then the top two vote getters go to the general election. So there can't be a, there's only two elections.
No, there's, there's been runoffs because I've been part of one before.
Yeah, but we call it a runoff, but it's really just, under this language, it's the general election, I believe. I do have a question about the why are we, the charter calls for filing dates in January. Why are we, why are our filing dates in December?
It's based on the upcoming presidential election year in 2020. You might want to answer that, Ms. Middleton.
The state election board controls all of the elections held within the state of Oklahoma. The, the state election board controls all of the elections held within the state of Oklahoma. And since we file, run our elections through the county. We have to follow the state. And they want everything running concurrently. Instead of having several different ones out and around.
And yeah, there are any other questions or comments? Take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Councilman Smith, second councilman Brown, any further discussion? Court, you call the roll, please.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Pritchard.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number two, consider an act upon an ordinance of the city of McAllister, amending Chapter 102, Article Five Bicycles Division Two License to Establish Updated Processes for Bicycle Registration with the Police Department. Chief Wansett.
I'm kind of tall, so I've lifted up. Good evening, mayor and council. And what we have is, we've changed our bicycle registration ordinance around a little bit. When I first started in first decade, I worked here, we had bicycle registrations. It was mandatory, but honestly, we probably had 25 or fewer bicycles a year registered. We have recently updated our records management system. We have a bicycle registration system that we can work with. And it would be my recommendation to require bicycles to be registered. When we register them, we will put down the serial number, we will put down the description. We may be able to put a picture of the bicycle in the registration. Right now, the McAllister Police Department is holding over 100 bicycles. And I believe maybe some of the council up here might have been part of the effort just a few years back in which Ignite McAllister reconditioned a bunch of bicycles to give them away to needy people. But it would really be nice to get bicycles back to the rightful owners too. By this bicycle registration system. Again, as I said, we would have the serial numbers down at the police department and a description of the bicycle. And so if we stopped a bicycle that didn't have registration, if we stop it with a registration, we can check it through that. But then if we found a bicycle that wasn't registered but had been, and the stickers could be removed. And we'll be able to figure out who the owner was because we would have serial number. And most bicycles now have serial numbers.
So, so it'll, it'll help recover bicycles that have been stolen because you'll be able to, if the sticker's on there, you'll be able to know who it goes back to as opposed to having to put it in with the 100 other bikes that we have.
That's correct.
Plus, if someone is riding a bike that isn't the person that that sticker belongs to, we can find out why that's happening.
That's correct.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Mayor, Chief.
Councilman Brown.
What is a penalty if you don't register? Because you know, a lot of people may or may not register.
I, I would agree with that. And, and that is a subject I, I think that should be discussed. We might have to check with the city attorney on that, but it appears to me as it's written that it would be a codes violation.
You know, councilwoman Harrison.
I've got a couple of questions. How much is this program going to cost the city?
We already have the program in records management to deal with the recording. The stickers would cost between 35 cents and 50 cents a piece.
35 cents. And then also, what is the average price of, of these bicycles? Are, you know, we, are they $100 bicycles that if $50 or what?
I, I, I would suspect that most of the ones that we have.
Yes.
Are probably in the neighborhood of 75 to 150 dollars.
And where are you finding these bicycles? They're left at random places?
They're left at random places.
Okay. Or any of these, quote, the bike bandit bicycles?
Possibly so, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Harrison, there are people in our community that are riding 10 and 12 thousand mile bicycles. Okay, this will help, help track those vehicles if anything should ever happen to them. So bicycles have gotten very expensive over the years.
If I rode a bike that expensive, I probably had it insured too.
Put it in the garage.
Yeah, I'm insured.
Mayor, I got one more question.
Yeah, councilman Brown.
So chief, this is going to apply to, I know a guy got a $7,000 bike. So he'll have to get her, get it registered as well.
That is correct. And when I was saying that most of the bicycles are the cheaper ones, the people that have the 70, $10,000 bicycles usually have the serial numbers and a good description and were able to figure out who they belong to. It's the people that run out to the discount store and buy one that we have loads of.
$59 Walmart.
Well, a big, a big part, a big part of doing, putting this together, because I was, I was part of the, the group that did this, is, you know, most of the bicycles are bought at Walmart and, and other places where they, they sell like 100 bikes that look exactly the same. So if they, if they find a bike now, you can go up and say, hey, that's my bike. And you got no way of proving it. So this, this will actually allow, allow you to say, hey, that's my bike, and this is why it's my bike.
I've got one last question. What are going to be the hours for registration? Is it going to be just through the week or what?
No, we're, we're going to register 24/7.
Oh, okay.
And, and it's no cost as well.
So, back to James's remark about the penalties. Is it worth all requiring this to be done and add some penalty if it's not?
My understanding. In the past, as we, in the past, it was extremely low. Excuse me, low. I think that we should make it mandatory and there should be some penalty, although I think you're going to have to ease that in. Like I said, you might get an opinion from the city attorney as to whether it's a codes violation. And that's an awful expensive violation if you go all the way up there.
And enforcement is kind of tough, right? You're not going to be stopping bicycle riders to check if they're registered.
We, we, the officer will occasionally stop bicycles, especially in the evening time. We have bicycles that are out at all hours of the night and there are certain regulations. They need headlights and taillights and, and so they stop and check who's out at night. When they do that, they would want to check to see if the bicycle's registered.
So we want to put a penalty on this?
Well, I don't think you can do it right now. Let's, let's bring an amendment and we'll add one. No, I don't think there is a kind of a clause.
I don't recall.
Probably be in the neighborhood of the registration fee.
No, there's no registration.
Did you try out, that was all stricken?
Miss Crickser. And, and I think there should be a period of time before a, a penalty is enacted.
We could, we could, we could pass this and come back with something along the lines of if, if, if they come across a bike that is not registered, that they confiscate the bike until they can prove ownership and register it. That's just, that's just spitballing. It's not.
I can have the officers write a warning to the person.
Yeah.
What is the age? We see a, you see a 13-year-old, you got, you stop them, a 10-year-old or just strictly 18 and above? How, how, how would you know it? Who would it stop and why would you stop them?
The, the bicycles are all supposed to be registered.
So if you see a, a child, you'd stop a child?
The, the officers won't be out there arbitrarily stopping children. However, if a child were to be riding in reckless manner, I'm sure they would try to correct that action. And they would, at that point, try to check and see if it's registered and then tell the child or the parent, if contact is necessary, that they need to register the bike.
Okay. I, I'm concerned that if children, I mean, like you said, reckless, you know, riding that, it's going to create some additional problems for the police department because you have, you're stopping children. I mean, I understand if they're being reckless or doing something, but are you ready to?
They're not going to be stopping them to check for registration. They would be stopping them for the same reasons they stopped them now.
Okay.
They're disobeying traffic laws in a manner to endanger themselves.
Oh, okay.
Something like that.
All right, I just wanted to make, get that clear for the public because they'll be wondering why is a 10-year-old being stopped?
Councilman Brown.
Thank you, mayor. Chief, one more question here. Now, if someone has a bike and then they come and add a lawnmower motor, and that does happen around here. I don't know, you've seen them. And they go by me sometime. Man, that's a bike, but it's got a motor. Maybe I need one of those. Running out of breath here. But how does that work?
I can't quote the statute, but you can put small motors on bicycles and you don't have to register them with the state.
Oh, okay.
And I don't recall exactly what the CC is.
Thank you, mayor.
Any other questions, comments? Well, I will make a motion to approve. Is there a second? A motion, second, second councilman Smith. I am having trouble with English tonight. Any further discussion? Court, you call the roll, please.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pritchard.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you, chief. We're on to agenda item number three. Consider an act upon an ordinance of the city of McAllister, establishing fees to be charged to property owners when a property owner requests the city install or repair tin horns, culverts on private property, and establishing a permit fee to the property owner for the permit to install or repair a tin horn or culvert. Ms. Urban.
Mayor, council. This is in, goes hand in hand with our master drainage plan that we've, we're addressing some issues that we have as far as mis-sizing of tin horns. And we, this is more about controlling what goes in rather than, you know, you know, a $5 fee is not, is just to be tracked. And then the, the, they can opt to do the $5 fee if they're going to install it, but they have to get the approval of our, so it's in line with our master drainage plan so that it's the right size. And they can install it themselves for that. And then if they want the city crews to do it, which we do now already, it'll be a $100 fee. And you can see the language we've added to the, to the ordinances. Are there any questions? I also, the design standards for the flow rate and the pipe sizing and et cetera are under Section 94, 120. If anybody wants to know what we'll be basing it on.
My question would be just where, how are, how are we going to prioritize requests on this? Because it's going to be, it's a new, we haven't done this before, correct?
No, we do that now. The streets department installs tin horns all the time.
Okay, we just hadn't charged for it in the past?
Right, and we didn't have documentation or, or tracking.
Right, to get the right size.
Right.
Go ahead, councilwoman Harrison. Oh, that's a quick question. What department will the fee be allocated to? Water Department, Street Department, where, where will the fees, what department will those, those fees go to?
This will be a stormwater.
Under the storm.
Related.
Thank you.
Councilman Brown.
I was going to ask, Assistant City Manager, what happens if we go out and we install these? Do we have any liability? I mean, they paid 100 bucks, but if it's done wrong or they, it's messed up or it floods back into their house by the city doing this, would we have any liability for installing that?
No more than we have now because we're already doing it. But we, we do fill, we put it back, we put the, you know, we do the, the putting back of all the material now.
Okay.
So no more than we have already.
Any other questions? That's for students.
Why don't we just have the language in here where it says it's the city manager or his designated representative? Why don't we just have the head of the streets department approving this?
I actually would, the streets department does the work, but we have stormwater. Oliver would be probably his designate normally.
Why don't we just?
Because he's the expert. Advice of council.
And in the event of that position being vacant, we need.
To designate someone else.
And I just, no offense, but I feel like your time would be spent better than signing off on this kind of stuff.
I'm going to give it to him unless he's not available.
I'm just curious because that's what it says, so.
Any other questions? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second councilman Reed. Any discussion? Court, you call the roll, please.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pritchard.
Yes.
Stevens.
No.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number four. Consider an act upon authorized, the mayor to sign change order number one from built right construction in the amount of $4,550. This change orders for, for an additional service connection relocating a storage building out of an easement and to add 60 days to the substantial completion date extended to October 19th, 2019 for 2018 CDPG sewer project.
Mayor, council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I did a handout to all the councilmen with a, an amendment for the change order. Today, when we were doing the final inspection, it was discovered that a unmarked, unknown sewer line was not connected and it was causing backup problems. So we're going to have to add a manhole and about 20 feet of sewer line. So on advice of council, we would amend, amend the already presented change order to add those items. So it'd be a total of $10,950.
Councilman Reed.
Mr. Staziet, was, was this building put on the easement after the easement was in place? Or was it already existing when the easement was put in?
I don't have that information.
Because it was put in on top of the easement. Shouldn't the homeowner be responsible for moving this?
They are, but as we got into this entire area back there, we had to remove fences. We had to remove storage units. We had to use, there was many, many things that over the years, people had just put over our, our easements. We got back in there and in, and the whole area was a mess, along with the fences, everything, so.
Okay, well, it goes back to my original question. What, why are we paying for it instead of the home?
Because this was an additional project that was not a repair project. It was a new line project. So we went in there.
I can probably address that. Actually, we were in negotiations to try and get the easement. What, it was a new easement and the original sewer line was underneath our house. And so we were getting the easement to move it over. And in the process of getting all the easement written up, the building actually got built before the easement was agreed to. And so we were working with the landowner, city staff, myself and others, we're working with the landowner to try and get that move. And if you recall at the time, this was the CDPG project that we had a timeline on to get that money spent. So we couldn't really wait forever. So what we did is we put in the bid, a packet itself, an alternate bid item to move that one building. So that, that's actually why it's, it was actually a bid was received on that by the city. And we ended up having to move that building. The homeowner didn't have the ability to move it, so the contractor moved it to put the new sewer line in.
So the building was there before the easement.
Before the easement was signed, yes, sir. But with the whole, the idea was to get the sewer line out from underneath the home.
I understand.
Get it out of the way.
Any other questions? Take a motion in a second to approve the amended amount of $10,950. Motion, Councilman Reed, second councilman Smith. Any discussion? Court, you call the roll, please.
Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pritchard.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number five. Consider an act upon an ordinance, amending ordinance number two, six, five, six, which establish a budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability clause and declaring an emergency.
Mayor, council. Exhibit A1 is for the general fund. And we're just taking from one expense to another expense. But anything over 25,000, we have to bring to the, the council. When someone leaves and has severance or unused leave, we allocate that to the department. We budget it in the inner department or we move it to the department it's supposed to be used in. And so this is just moving it from one to another and because it was over the 25,000. from one to another, and because it was over the twenty-five thousand. A-two is a budget supplement to lapse and reappropriate expenditure, expenditures on projects from eighteen nineteen that we had not moved forward. These are the, uh, raw water thirty-inch line that is in progress right now in the Tallawanna Dam project. And, um, uh, some upcoming lift stations. So, this is, um, the infrastructure fund. Exhibit A-three is in the tourism fund. This is exactly the same thing. It says, it, it's a, Streetscape was a project last year that we need to carry forward this amount in order to, um, pay the, the final payments. Um, and then the A-four is the CDBG fund. This is carried, carrying these. One of them is carried forward to two thousand eighteen, and two thousand nineteen is actually a new project. Are there any questions?
Will I take the motion in a second? Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Court, would you call Earl, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. This has an emergency with it, so I take a motion in a second, emergency, Council, motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Court, would you call Earl, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number six. Discussion and update on financials. And you were there, Miss Urban.
Yes. This is your financial summary, the general financial glance. It's September, it's through September thirtieth, so twenty-five percent of the year has passed. Our revenues are at twenty-four point two percent, so point eight percent under budget. Expenditures are twenty-five point six-three. Of course, the transfers should be twenty-five percent at this point. The revenues in the, the MPW fund at a glance are at twenty-four point four. And compared to twenty-five percent is point six under budget, and the expenditures are well under budget at nineteen point six-two. And again, the transfers are right at twenty-five percent. The, um, sales tax revenue grafted is through September, but we already have October's number. And you're, you're, it is six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, six eighty-five. The, uh, we are, we are doing very well on our sales tax. And, and making, you know, good progress. Very happy with that. Um, the use tax, we, is also through September thirtieth. But we already have the number for October, which is one hundred and eleven thousand dollars, seven sixty-nine. So, very good, very good number, uh, above what we had last year and the previous year. The water sales. Again, some of, some of the months that you see here are above what last year was, and some are below. We've had a wet year, so the consistency is not the same as last year. Both in the water districts and then the, the, the water sales residents and commercial. And then the treasurer's report is our money in the bank, and that is looking just fine also.
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Urban. Thank you.
I'm on the next one, too.
Oh, yeah?
Trying to get rid of me.
I was just trying to give you a break. We're on to agenda item number seven. Consider and act upon a memorandum of understanding between McAllister Public Works Authority and the Board of Education of Independent School District Number Eighty, Pittsburgh County, Oklahoma, that authorizes the release of funds derived from city ordinance two-one-five-nine reacquisition, construction, and renovation of educational facilities. Go ahead.
This is, um, all of the paperwork is in order. The, the McAllister Public Schools has turned this in for their project over at Peter Ball. I know that, um, you know, this has been discussed at previous councils' meetings, uh, but that they were all on estimates, and I kinda like specific numbers. And to cut a check for one point one million dollars, so, um, it was also in a previous fiscal year, so we have to redo and bring it back to the council. And so, um, unless you have any questions, we will issue the check, and it will be on your next claims list, and they can pick it up to finish their project at Peter Ball.
I have, I just have one question. It's not necessarily on this, but in the remainder that's in that account, what, what do we, what do, what does the school need to do for us to get them that money? Just because it, it seems, seems odd that we would be just holding it for them when we can't use it for anything else except for them, that.
Right. Um, well, this is the old money, which is related to the bond, and the, it is worded that Krebs and Frink will also get a small portion in, um, in relation to this amount. But the remainder in that fund, because the new money is being sent monthly, because it has no bonds related to it. But at the time, we did not have the final numbers from the bond being closed out either at the time. So, all of that money will be, you know, and they are earning an interest on that money in that account.
Yeah, but we're having to administer what's essentially their account, right?
Well, and I've discussed with them, they, I think they already identified the project that they're gonna bring for the remainder amount of the money.
Okay, great.
Ms. Urban, so if the school were to get this checked tonight, it'd be, they couldn't get it because there's a hangup with the bond? Is that what you said?
No, I, I didn't issue it until it's approved by you, and we, we will issue it as soon as tomorrow. And, but they won't be able to pick it up until it's on the claims list and you approve it.
Next week, couple weeks?
Yeah, at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Smith, second vice mayor Stevens. Any discussion? Court, would you call Earl, please?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We are on to agenda item number eight. Presentation on the action plan for the Moving McAllister Forward twenty forty comprehensive plan. Ms. Clifton?
Good evening, Council. Just gotta wait for this to
Just a second.
Warm up, so. Okay, I've, uh, prepared a presentation for you tonight concerning the action plan, which is part of the Moving McAllister Forward twenty forty, uh, comprehensive plan. So, as you know, uh, the Moving McAllister Forward twenty forty plan was adopted in September twenty-four, two thousand nineteen. And this was after, um, a long eighteen-month process of utilizing public input. But it basically includes a vision and framework of implementation of the community's goals, and is a long-range policy guide. So, um, we're currently in phase six of the code review, which is being, uh, conducted by Duncan Associates. And, um, but this action plan takes into consideration the recommendations, um, provided in realizing, um, the vision, which is a chapter in the comprehensive plan. And I've referenced the pages there, uh, pages eighty-eight through one-thirty-seven. So, um, through all this public input, um, there are seven areas, and they're listed here. Of those seven areas, there are forty-two recommendations in each of the areas. And those are just, um, very, um, broad, um, recommendations. And then each of those recommendations will have, um, a variety of different ways that they can be implemented. But the recommendations reflect the information which was gathered from, uh, the public and many of the city departments. And they provide the guidance, um, on where our efforts as a city should be focused on. So, um, so the adoption of the plan is a very small portion of the comprehensive plan. And the overall long-range efforts of the plan. So, as you know, through this process, we went through a considerable amount of public input. Throughout the entire process, public input was accepted in person and online. And then there were also several, um, meetings, public meetings, where the public was allowed to provide more information on boards and gather, uh, clarification of what was going on. There were surveys, um, that were done that garnered fifteen hundred responses, um, from the public as well. And we also had a forum stakeholder and a steering committee that was comprised of our, you know, public, um, citizens. And so, that included residents, property owners, business people, community organizations, interest groups, and others that are impacted by the decisions made during the planning process. So, as you can see, the citizen comments and input was accepted a variety of ways. And so, we must really keep in mind that this is the public's plan. So, um, the citizens and stakeholders, um, have a vested interest in seeing us keep to our commitments of implementing these recommendations through the plan. So, therefore, we need to achieve, um, positive and measurable results. And to do that, uh, we'll do it through the action planning process. And so, this is gonna prevent the plan from just sitting on a shelf and to not be implemented. But this action plan process is basically, it's a six-step, um, process. We had met initially, um, the variety of the different departments and staff that's listed there at the bottom. And basically, we would go through, we would identify a major concern. And then we would list the goals and the recommendations in the plan that associate with that major, uh, concern. So that we're actually addressing things that are in the plan. So, um, the recommendation by Guernsey and Naylin Planning, which were the consultants throughout this process, was to develop up to three steps, and each of them having a start and finish. So, they were very specific. But it was to be no more than three steps. If it was more than three steps, and it was something that we really needed to step back and analyze and say, we probably need to break this into more doable projects. So, each of those three steps had, you know, the start and finish, months, uh, weeks, days, you know, and we assigned those to when we thought that we could get those achieved. So then, we also identified obvious partners, um, because a lot of times in the community, there's people that are trying to accomplish basically the same thing that we are. And so, those are good partners for us to work with and, um, align our goals together. And then we also, um, again, set reasonable timelines to achieve all of these. So, we would continue to discuss these and refine them, um, with clear leads and milestones identified. Um, so we did our initial meeting in August, and that was, um, just kinda get the process started. And then we did, uh, set follow-up meetings, and each department had to bring, you know, key initiatives that they identified. So, after the plan was adopted, then we refined and narrowed that, and we came up with, um, six areas to prioritize our efforts on. And that was also a recommendation to not generate too big of a plan, or too big of a list, you know, that we wanted to keep it doable and very focused, um, in our efforts. So, of those, um, key initiatives, we had come up with, um, I believe there were thirteen. And these six were the ones that kinda bubbled to the top. So, in here on this, uh, graphic, you can see those are listed at the top, and then the correlating recommendations from our comprehensive plan. But these, again, are our highest, um, priority to focus our efforts. And even though we have the other key initiatives that were identified, you know, the departments can continue to kinda work those through. But these are the forefront in our focus of what we're doing. So, to go through some of these, um, initiatives, uh, the wastewater analysis and reconstruction. So, we, we realized that our wastewater, uh, treatment plants are near capacity. And, um, one of the, uh, major concerns also is the West Wastewater Treatment, um, plant is probably more vital for our industrial development, so it affects us and kinda impedes our economic development abilities. So, um, these are kinda the details, um, it kinda explains, you know, the focus of what this project is. The leads, the potential partners that we'll work with through this process, and the specific steps and the timeline of accomplishing each of those three steps. And I also wanna, um, explain that those, those timelines are concurrent. So, like, the ninety days on the first step and six months on the next, that six months includes ninety days as well, it's not separate. So, within a one-year time, we plan, we hope to have a plan in mind to address this issue. And one of the issues with this one as well is the cost, and we know that it's going to probably be a multi-year plan, you know, to address the funding issue of getting this accomplished. So, that's one of the big challenges with this one. The next one is crime prevention. This was a concern in, um, a recommendation in the housing and the health and well-being of, that kinda came through the recommendations, um, of the public. So, the, and this is basically to deter, like, theft crimes in the neighborhoods. And this would be through what's called, uh, crime prevention through environmental design or SEP TED and the neighborhood watch programs. And so, the McAllister Police Department will be a lead in this project, and they'll, uh, partner with several, um, different entities that are listed there. But basically, it's to, um, not only educate the community, but also to train our officers in the neighborhood watch and SEP TED policies. And if you're not aware, the SEP TED is basically, um, it's, it's a way to prevent crime through urban environmental design and the management and use of built environments. And then, you probably have heard of neighborhood watch programs. It's probably one of the oldest national, uh, crime prevention programs that we have. But the structured trainings that are available, uh, would be beneficial for our officers to receive that. And basically, they would train, then go out and train, um, our community groups and be able to deliver specific information on how to implement both of these programs. The next one is stormwater implementation and education. As you know, that we had adopted the Master Drainage Plan, uh, this month, uh, I believe that was at our last meeting. And, um, so, a lot of, uh, residents, I mean, even I didn't even know until I worked here that there are basically, there are four basins in McAllister, and include Sandy Creek, Mud Creek, and Dancing Rabbit Creek, and then four other tributaries. And so, I think that a lot of, uh, citizens may not be aware of how, you know, the waters in the City of McAllister affect them. So, um, even though, um, they may not be flooding, uh, you know, in their areas, but what they're doing may be affecting people downstream. And so, it's really an effort that we need to educate on things that people can do to prevent the flooding. This will be in conjunction with the repair and maintenance, and installation of ditches, curbs, canals, retention ponds, and storm sewer drains. That's already being done. You can see in some of the pictures, some of the work that has been, uh, done already. The next, oh, went too fast there. The next one is employee satisfaction and retention. And this is kind of a, a concern that if we want to implement this plan successfully, we wanna keep our employees that will be on board to do this. Not only is losing employees a cost, um, in resources and time, but it's also, I mean, it's knowledge that they build, um, things that they know, the history of McAllister and some of these projects that they're aware of. So, um, a lot of this is also, um, our succession planning and cross-training, and also identifying, um, areas of upward growth that employees are seeking at times. So, we realize that we have an aging workforce, and we want to avoid gaps in our workforce as people retire. And then also identify areas where people can move up, if that's what they desire. But again, um, this is looking at where the city's going as far as our employees in the next five, ten, and fifteen years. I keep double-clicking, I guess. The next one is the EMS Transport Services, and this has a lot to do, um, it's part of infrastructure because, um, our public services are, are emergency services that we have as part of the infrastructure. And this is, uh, maintaining adequate systems, and also it affects the health and well-being of our citizens. And so, to basically, um, they'll be exploring the further needs of all parties, including, uh, patients, McAllister Regional Health Center, and also McAllister Fire Department. And this is taking the health and all policies approach as recommended in the comprehensive plan. But basically, the patients are being transferred, or the patients are being delivered to MRHC, which is a level-three facility. And then, if they're required, once they get there and they assess what their medical needs are, there's times that they must be transferred to a level-two or a level-one facility. And so, those patients are needing to, um, wait for private transport. Sometimes, that's not Sometimes that's not available. And so our McAllister Fire Department is having, you know, is transporting those patients. And then it's creating, I mean, it's as far as like the available ambulances or staff that's in our community, it takes away from that. And so they'll be looking at a way to assess this and basically the transportation as a business plan for McAllister Fire and how it affects the fire department as a whole. I keep giving y'all a preview of the next slide, huh? And on this one here, this is sidewalk and trails connectivity. And this has a lot to do with transportation and the health and wellbeing. As you can see in some of the pictures, we have in the top right, you know, that's a trail like we like to see. The middle picture is basically, you know, where we're seeing like foot traffic. And then the bottom right picture is actually from a group that is known as the Walkers of McAllister, where they're kind of a social media group that has been posting and identifying areas where we lack sidewalk or infrastructure for people to walk or bike. And so through social media and other routes, this has become basically a high priority for citizens. And this is one of the initiatives that we plan to address. So we know the McAllister, the Master Trails Plan was completed in June of 2012. We've been able to accomplish a portion of the Belmont Trail. And then the Water Waste Trail is in design right now. So this was supposed to have been, the Master Trails Plan should have been implemented and done in a 15-year period. However, we're in their seventh year and we're really struggling to get some of these areas done. Also, the funding issues that we have. Some of the issues that we ran into is the access. And forgive me if I talk really long on this one because this is kind of my area. So, but, so also there are not current codes or the codes are a little bit vague on new developments or new subdivisions on how sidewalks should be included. So that's another area in this initiative that we'll be covering as well. So as a conclusion, our key initiatives and our commitment to the public for providing input. So since they provided us the information, we really need to take this and do something with it. And we'll be doing monthly meetings on the action plan project teams. They will be meeting monthly to make sure and ensure that these are progressing forward. And then the other action planning key staff that was a part of this entire process will meet quarterly. And we will be using this, you know, to continue identifying areas that we can address. Also, we anticipate providing quarterly updates to the community and in public meetings so that we continue to communicate that back to them, what we're doing. Are there any questions? Well, thank you for your time.
I have a question. Nobody else has a question. So under the, what are they, goals? Is that right?
Recommendations.
Yeah, but the, the different areas, the, the land use, the housing and neighborhoods, economic development, those different categories. Why do, why didn't, why did none of these projects that you presented focus on land use and development design?
It's kind of a, it's in a way of basically like low hanging fruit, you know, because things align and they seem to be the most pressing issues based on, you know, input that the staff is getting, also the availability of maybe funds or grants that are coming along. You know, just everything kind of aligns. Some of the land use, a lot of those things I'm, I'm kind of doing anyways. And so we've got some of those and those things will be moving along. Like I said, they're, they kind of move along in the background. It's just these six are kind of the, at the forefront of accomplishing needs.
Okay. I don't, this is just a comment and this isn't a question, but I don't feel that these plans, let me use the correct term, this action plan does a good job of pairing up to the vision articulated in the comprehensive plan. I'm sure they're all worthwhile projects and some of them, you know, need to be done in addition to the work of realizing the vision of the comprehensive plan. But I just don't feel that these do. Some numbers to kind of crystallize what I'm thinking here. If you look at on the presentation of the key initiatives, so there's the six different areas. And then the staff has identified, for instance, on the wastewater analysis and reconstruction, that that interfaces with IC1, ED2 and ED3. These are category codes from the goal from the comprehensive plan. So I believe there are 12 different areas of the comprehensive plan that the key initiatives interact with. Or actually, maybe there's 14, but only three of those, I'm sorry, about 20% of those are dedicated to the, to the land use development and housing, or I'm sorry, the land use development, economic development portions of the plan. That's about 50% of all the goals articulated in this plan. At the same time, about 20% of the goals, or not the goals, but 20% of these key initiatives deal with transportation. Transportation is only one page out of approximately 50 in this plan. I, again, you know, I think expanding EMS service, EMS services is probably something we need to do. But I don't know that that does anything to help us realize our vision. And until we begin as a community, as a staff, as a city council, to focus on the bulk of what is in this plan, the goals to support this vision on page 63, we're not going to get there. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on this. We spent, I don't know how much time, a lot of time. And if we are not vigilant about sticking to what is said right there on page 63 and then the supporting 50 pages, you know, I don't think that's going to be a very good use of our funds. Thank you.
There, there are 11 in land use and 11 economic development, two in housing, three in parks, one in infrastructure, seven in transportation and seven in community health and wellbeing. A lot of these recommendations kind of overlap. Land use and economic development are probably going to be a major focus of this because in our RFP process, we actually had asked for a focus in that. And a community, a comprehensive plan has a lot of focus on land development. But like I said, it, it's not really, I don't, I don't think that we should get caught up too much in the numbers of the number of recommendations that are in here. Because like on infrastructure, it's a very, I mean, the, the recommendation is simple. I mean, we need to fix our failing infrastructure, our very aged failing infrastructure. And so we really have to look at, you know, what the needs of the community are, what we hear all the time here at the city of what people are really pressing us for at the moment. So, and then also, like I said, you know, with the funding, kind of lining up the partnerships that we may have, you know, grant opportunities, stuff like that. But I hope that we don't get too caught up in the number of recommendations that are in each area because they do overlap. And there's some of them that actually reference back to other recommendations. But also, like I said, you know, it, there's a lot of, there's a lot of weight in some of the things that, you know, that need to be addressed probably more immediately.
Thanks, Mr. Stevens. This is probably going to be more of a rambling thought, so I apologize in advance. Anything else, probably worse than usual. I am, when we first started the comprehensive plan, I thought it was an incredible waste of money. Still voted in favor because we had funded and, correct me if I'm wrong, city manager like 25 years or more. Yeah. So I thought, you know what, something we haven't done as a community in a long time. I'm, I list and sell houses for a living. We get to work with lots of different people and different companies. And I thought, this will be a good thing because we'll figure out where our community's going. So we go through the process. I know Jamie worked very vigilantly on that. And I know that you had ups and downs and getting things coordinated. And I think you did a wonderful job on it. And I don't think any of my comments should be reflected towards you in what I'm saying. So please don't take it that way. But at the end of it, we got a packet and I thought, you know, this is a really good reimagining of where McAllister can go for the next 20, 25 years, maybe longer considering how long we did the comprehensive plan last time. And I thought, we'll do this and we'll take this and we'll imagine what we can do for the future. Because right now, in my, my experience so far in selling houses the last year or so, the majority of people that are moving here are coming here for a job. They cycle in and out in about two to three years, then they move again. Or I have an older demographic that's moving all closer to their kids and grandkids who are approximately my age, maybe a little bit younger, a little bit older. But they've all taken jobs in Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Dallas, Austin, west coast, east coast. I mean, that, that happens everywhere. That McAllister is no different than that. But the, the problem I think I have is that every time I sell one of these houses for these people, and I'm, I'm happy to do it, but every time I sell one of the houses for the people, the main comments that I get is that, you know, McAllister just hasn't changed. It just hasn't changed. You know, I love it here. This is home. But, you know, my kids are up there and they've got a job here. Or my kids wanted to be up there because of X, whatever it is. And it's usually not a strip mall. It's usually not that they hated McAllister. It's just that they had a better opportunity and it was different. Man, where I'm moving to, I'm right down the street from my kids. I can walk everywhere. There's restaurants down the road. Nothing, that right now doesn't exist in McAllister, Oklahoma. And we got a comprehensive plan that tells us what we should be aiming for and doing. We just received it. It's not going to change overnight. We can make some dramatic improvements in a short amount of time. But I think that I'm frustrated in seeing this. Not, not because I think none of these are worthwhile or doable. They're great. We need to be doing all of them. But I don't think it's taken us forward. I think these are all things that we should be working on on a daily basis anyways. We just had a water system about go dry on us. And you know, these are problems that we know we have. We have to address them. I know that. But if we don't have more people here in a healthy way developing our community, we don't tackle our land codes and uses and we don't allow for the very things that we're talking about. And some of this is addressed in here, Jamie, and I know that you worked diligently on this. I get to work with you outside of council. I know this. But my frustration is, and I think this more is reflected on me as a council person too, is that I don't think that we get creative. And I don't think we imagine what McAllister can be going for because if it stays the same right now, we're not in a better place 25 years now from the handoff to our kids, grandkids, whoever. So like I said, this is more of a rambling thought than anything. But I think my frustration in seeing this a little bit and even with myself tonight is that we're not taking progressive steps to change our community. I'd like to challenge us to do that, but I'd also like to challenge city staff to make us uncomfortable. You've got a plan that we paid almost $200,000 for. I know that you guys want to do some creative things. I know, Jamie, we've talked about a lot of stuff, in and out of stuff. I'd like to see some stuff that's going to challenge us, that's going to stretch us. I think these are all worthwhile deals, but I'm frustrated with seeing this tonight because I think we, we can go bigger than this. And these are very small actionable items. I love it. It's great. We should do them all. But I think there's other things that we can tackle from that comprehensive plan that can help. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thanks.
We are on to new business, any matter not known or which could not have been recently, reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with section 311.9, Title 25 of Oklahoma State Statutes. Do you have any business?
We do not.
Yes, it's good. The city manager should report.
I gave you a report this evening. A couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention. Number one is the Talawanda 20-inch water line replacement. That project has started. I wanted to give you an example of that. If you look at your packet on the last page, it gives you an idea. I think sometimes we forget the size of the material that we are working with and what this entails in order to put these things together. But if you look at this, this is the, the last picture in your packet. That's the 30-inch water line. That's the valve and the tee that they installed. This was all done during the day. We had the plant shut down. The citizens of McAllister experienced nothing, no problems out of, out of any of this. The plant was shut down for about eight hours. Is that correct? And everything went well. Well, there was some pickups, but everything was managed very well. The other project that we have going on is the, the 30-inch water line, the hot tap for a 20-inch. If you look at the second, the last picture, the one in color in your packet, that valve right there is four and a half feet tall. I mean, sometimes you just don't realize some of the equipment that we have to work with and the type of materials that, that goes into this infrastructure and why it costs so much until you have a good, good visualization of it. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is the Washington Fifth Street Roundabout. Bids will be opened on that on October the 31st. We will have that analyzed and hopefully to the council with recommendations at the first meeting in November. That project will start, probably start construction after the first of the year because of its being next to the post office and that being the busy time of the year. Business 69 and Choctaw Avenue. That traffic signal, those traffic signals at that intersection have been out since the beginning of the streetscape program downtown. We asked to analyze, we asked ODOT to analyze that intersection and to help us understand whether or not those traffic signals actually needed to be there or not. Since the day that we took those traffic signals out, put a four-way stop in there, traffic has flowed easier, better and much more rapidly through that intersection, not getting backed up off of 270. ODOT has come back to us and told us that they don't have any problems with us taking that signalization off at Main Street and Choctaw. We are designing a four-way stop at that intersection right now. We're probably looking at a monument in the middle of the intersection, some kind of stop monument because of the way that that, that intersection sits. But we'll be designing that and moving forward with taking those traffic signals off at Choctaw and Business 69. It's On Your Way Bank Stabilization Project. We're working on the easements. We hope to have that completed this week or early next week. One of the reasons that we're really focusing on this as a stormwater project is because that canal back there has moved over 21 feet. We've got people that are losing property, having property damage back there. That is extending that canal with a concrete floor in it approximately 460 feet. This is just a project that needs to get done. And then the last project, you know, we've had three major projects this year. One is the 30-inch water line on the dam at Lake McAllister, which is, you saw pictures of today. The reroute of the 20-inch water line coming out of the water plant and getting it out of the old water plant down below. The third one is the Coal Creek Pump Station, getting that back online, having a secondary source of water to the city of McAllister, which we don't have. We are in the process of disconnecting those pumps out of that facility right now. And we hope to be removing the pumps and motors next week and sending them off for, to be rebuilt and analyzed and rebuilt. We don't know how long that's going to take, but once we get those back, they'll be reinstalled. We're working on an electrical program for that pump station right now. And hopefully during the year of 2020, we will have that secondary water source back online for the city of McAllister. Hasn't been online since 1986, I believe, is when it was constructed. So some really, really good projects moving the city forward, great infrastructure projects. And we're getting after them, getting them tackled. So, thank you.
Remarks and inquiries, please, the council, council rate.
First of all, I would like to thank the Cowboys Community Action, the domestic violence advocates for coming in at our invitation. Also carrying hands in, in conjunction with breast cancer awareness. And I would like to thank Coral Middleton, a court clerk, for helping us put these proclamations together. Thank you so much, Mrs. Middleton. Make a Difference Day is this coming Saturday, October the 26th. Volunteers will meet at the Boys and Girls Club from 7:30 a.m. until 2 p.m. They're asking volunteers to donate at least two hours of free service. There will be a free lunch for the workers and also there will be door prizes. The Oklahoma Geological Historical Society will have a history lesson at the North Town Cemetery on Tuesday, October the 26th at 5:30. And it's not about Halloween. All right. So I thought I'd throw that in there. And thank you. I thought I'd throw that in there. And thank you.
City manager, the streetlights on the Streetscape downtown?
Yes.
Do you know they're not working?
We do, and we've got an electrician that we had hired to finish that project. He has now resigned from that project, and we're in the process of hiring another electrician. He got very busy.
Sounds like the story. Have we hired a CFO yet?
We have not, but I can tell you, we are going to be making an offer to a different, to another one this week.
Okay. And the same question on the, I don't know the job title, but the person that's in charge of the utilities, what's that job title?
The UTM manager.
UTM.
We are in the process of promoting somebody internally and then bringing on a onsite forum to work directly with her.
Okay. Well, you're talking about taking out traffic lights. I've got a question. What about the light at Third and Choctaw? Have you ever done a similar, look at that?
We have not yet.
I've just, we've taken out so many lights, and that's the only one left on Choctaw. It might be something worth looking at. A question on the Coal Creek water. So, we're going to have two water sources. That's the idea, right?
That is correct.
How is the water quality and sort of safety affected by the two different water sources? Or how do you anticipate it will be?
That'll be, it'll be a mixed system. You know, it's, it's something that's analyzed through our labs and how we treat it. Yeah, Coal Creek is a dirtier water source. We realize that. But we're going to need to have that secondary water source, so we'll, we'll know how to treat it.
Okay. Thank you.
I wanted to say, and I was really, just like all of us, were, the policeman that did this out of goodwill is hard. This is something buzzy, you know, you hear so many negatives sometimes throughout the country. I think that's very commendable. And that little girl just showing, looking at her face and how happy she was to receive that back. I don't know who would steal something like that, but I guess a thief is a thief, no matter what it is. Thank you.
Mayor's comments. We, I had, we had a couple of events the last couple of weeks at Chattock Park. We had Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is, this is, it was their third one. And it has grown every year. There were, there were hundreds of people down there this time for, for it. And it was, it was a good time and a good, good group. We had CEAC, which is a equality group. They had their, they had their function at Chattock Park and had quite a few people come in from out of town. And another, another good time there. Upcoming, the, there is going to be a dedication to a bridge, 69 and 270, for Sergeant Jason McCloskey, who was killed in Afghanistan. I think it's three years ago, possibly before.
He was injured, injured in Afghanistan, came back and died subsequent to those injuries.
Yeah. So, that, that will be coming up. And that's a, that's going to be a project that is put on by the Army, ODOT, four years?
No, it's the fourth.
Okay, yeah, November 4th. It will be, we'll be setting up at Oak Hill Cemetery. And there'll be the city, the Army, and Oklahoma Department of Transportation are all working together on that to get it and make it a good, make it a, a good dedication. So, that, I would take a motion now. We will recess council meeting. I take a motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority and motion to include approval of minutes from October 8th, 2019, regular meeting in McAllister Airport Authority. Confirm action taken on city council agenda item B and to adjourn. Motion, Council Smith, Second Council Reid, any discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Council Smith?
Yes.
Reid?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now, take a motion to convene as McAllister Public Works Authority. Motion to include approval of minutes from October 8th, 2019, regular meeting in McAllister Public Works Authority. Confirm action taken on city council agenda item B, 3, 4, 5, 7, and to adjourn. Motion, Council Brown, Second Council Smith, any discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Council Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reid?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now, take a motion to convene as McAllister Retirement Trust Authority. Motion to include approval of minutes from September 24th, 2019, regular meeting in McAllister Retirement Trust Authority. Approval of retirement benefits for the period of October 2019 and to adjourn. Motion, Council Smith, Second Council Brown, any discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Council Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reid?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We will now reconvene as city council. I take a motion to adjourn. Motion, Council Smith, Second Council Reid, any discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Council Smith?
Yes.
Reid?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, motion carries. We're now adjourned. Thank you, guys.